...member Nutting and myself, all those opposed, I see council member Harris and council member Oxger. The censure passes five-two. Are there any correspondents?
There are no other correspondents outside the emails already received by council. They'll be in the packet tomorrow.
Okay. It's now time for the comments from the public. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent slanderous remarks or become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You have three minutes to speak, and the first one on the list is Mr. Bill Linscott.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager, and everybody else who's here. I'm speaking as a resident tonight, and I have a couple of thoughts on the study session. We certainly appreciate the time you had devoted to allowing the public to comment. I think everybody had a chance that wanted to comment that night to comment. One of the drawbacks of that, though, is the council got shorted. We would have liked to have heard more discussion of the questions and inquiries there. And I think there are questions you've still got. I know there's questions from the public we were hoping to hear yet passed around. So I hope in the future, not too far away, there's a second session of that, that study session, and this time we'll listen to you. I think that's important. We need to hear what you all are thinking, the questions you have, based on that, we'll answer some of our own. It looks like we're deferring the, kind of, the private investment part to that north end of the bulkhead there, or the Marina. And so we'll have some quiet time, but we certainly heard several council members say, "We intend to put some commercial stuff down there." So it'll be back. I don't know when, but in this time when we're maybe not pursuing that as much, I would have encouraged you to get a process in place where you update yourselves on the public preferences. Last time we did that was on the Argosy boat years ago. And I get the feeling sometimes you think the public's against any kind of change down there. It's not. It's about right change and getting the right stuff there and its size to fit. And I think that would be a worthwhile thing to do as, in parallel with bringing on the public features that you're going to pursue. Suggestion on the questions. The dock replacement folks had a process when they put out their plan. They said, "Send us your questions, and we'll respond to them, and we'll post them all." I think you ought to have some concept like that developed for this portion. They had them all on the website. Scott and Katie did a marvelous job trying to answer everything they could, let people know where they couldn't because they weren't ready yet. But eventually, we had fewer questions, and it was feeling far between, and it's helped a lot. That would work here as well. I think this process we have for public comment in this meeting is good for certain things. It's not good for this kind of dialogue because you can't discuss it. So we're looking for something that you all will have that allows that kind of engagement to work. And there are just a couple of other things you want input on, like the comprehensive plan. You need to think about how we collect public inputs on that. We really want to engage. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Linscott. Ms. Victoria Andrews.
I'm Victoria Andrews, and I represent Marina Estates on the corner of Sixth and 223rd, and its 36-unit owners comprising individuals, couples, and families. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for continuing to involve the community in the long-term planning for the use of our city's resources. I have been meeting with many others whose top priority is to preserve our shoreline for the generations that will follow us. At our last meeting, there was consensus that we all want two things: thoughtfully-planned progress and the reinstallation of a citizens advisory board, which has disappeared from the city's website as a volunteer opportunity. I don't know if you know that. By comparison, the city of Kent, where I worked for over nine years, has five citizen commissions. You, we, can do better. Before approving the proposal on Marina redevelopment, I'd like you to consider an amendment that defines the scope of the feasibility studies, specifically what projects will be studied and the physical boundaries referred to by the word "land side." The amendment should include a timeline and cost not to exceed a certain amount. Finally, the amendment should state a mechanism for public accountability that includes the establishment of a planning commission or special purpose committee that would meet monthly with staff and elected officials to keep the progress on track. We elect our council members to represent our voice, and clearly by the attendance last week, you could see that we want our voice to be heard and respected. It appeared that you valued and appreciated that. So if the city manager chooses not to establish a planning commission on the future of our Marina at the repeated request of the citizens that you serve, he's ignoring the will of the voters who elected you. How do you feel about that? He is the manager. You are the elected officials, the leaders. Thank you so much.
Ms. Eldon Davis. Or Sir Eldon Davis, sorry.
Sir?
Yeah, Eldon. My apologies. In fact, one of the finest men I ever knew was named Eldon, so my apologies.
It's not Elton, it's Eldon.
Eldon, yeah. E-L-D-O-N, right?
Right-o. Well, hello. Yes, my name is Eldon Davis. I spoke last time regarding the, what we thought was going to be the emphasis on the hotel and retail spaces. That didn't turn out quite that way. But this time, I'll be speaking about what was talked about last time mostly, and that was a creek along or on 223rd, and then the steps going down to the Marina. And I would say also that my words are going to be a little bit different than the copy I sent you guys, because I had some other words, but the content is the same. All right, creek along 223rd. I think most of us realize going down 223rd into the Marina is only one of two spots where you can drive to the Marina. That's all, two ways to get there. So question one, where along 223rd will this creek that was proposed begin, and where will it end? What does that mean?
That's somebody in the shot, so we should all...
Oh, then I should subtract some. Agree?
We'll give you leeway, sir. Go ahead, continue on. After I called you Mrs., I definitely got to give you some time. All right, go ahead.
All right, that's one, question one. Number two, what will happen to the creek once it gets near the end of 223rd? Three, how will the underground water east of the creek, starting point, get to that starting point? Four, how wide and deep will the creek be in the estimated velocity of the water? Five, will the creek have some form of covering, or will it be open? And if it's open, what will prevent people, animals, and trash from getting into that creek? Six, how will the people in the large condo on the north side of 223rd and west of six, right down near the turning point, how will they get in and out of their parking areas if the creek is along part of 223rd? Second item, the Marina steps. Why is the concept called "steps" instead of "walkway"? I wish that guy from Skylab would be here. I think a better name may be Marina Access Walkway, because that's what it will have to be if you're going to be ADA-approved. Relatively, so how much distance will there be between where the creek ends, if it's down here, 223rd, and the steps slash walkway, and I'll be saying that combination several times, where it will begin? ADA-wise, what requirements will you be incorporated into this steps-walkway? A slope of 8.33%? A five-by-five-foot level platform every 30 feet? Thank you.
Good call, sir.
A length of five, a width of five feet, handrails on both sides, and probably some specified surface material. And what will be the underneath support for approximately 420 feet of zigzag and 70 feet, including 70-plus, additional 70 feet for those platforms, horizontal platforms? Five, if people come to the steps by car, where are they going to park? Because right now, there is no place to park along there. Six, how much area, length by width, below the cliff will be needed for the steps and the walkway? And a bit of humor, what is your estimate of what percent of people walking down will have the energy to walk back up? I'll take any guesses. My concluding thoughts, the area at the top of 223rd and near the cliff seems to be very congested and a negative impact on cars wishing to drive down to the Marina using that route. Regarding the steps or walkway, the name Marina Access Walkway seems more appropriate, and for some, going down will be probably an exciting adventure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Moving on to Ms. Sharon Morehouse.
Okay, so my topic is kind of the Marina, but mainly, my focus is on safety. I really believe that enforcing and maintaining what we already have needs to be a priority to begin this project or any other project. We're trying to stuff in to this small town that we're being told we can't keep a small town anymore, which is probably the reason most of us moved here in the first place, or we'd be living in Seattle instead. They're all trying to get out with good cause, and I don't think progress for the sake of progress is what we need to be after. We're...I've noticed that Normandy Park is over here, and Kent is over here, and Federal Way is over here, and Puget Sound is over there, and we really don't have a lot of territory left to stuff a whole bunch more cars and people in. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Morehouse. Moving on to Mr. Sean Daly.
Thank you, Mayor. Sean Daly, 25-year Des Moines resident and current president of South Shores Condos, located on Sixth Avenue and 223rd in Des Moines. We have about 48 units and almost 100 owners. Hotel, it's wonderful to hear from the city staff and council at the last study session that seems to be no longer on the table and that bonds could be used as the primary source of revenue for projects at the Marina, such as the Marina steps or adaptive purpose building. No hotel, protect our open spaces. Thank you. Marina steps, these steps will run just north of South Shores Condos. We've been told that the steps will come with some several nice improvements and enhancements along the 223rd Street corridor, such as dropped utilities, new sidewalks, improved lighting, and landscaping. But with that comes more foot traffic and vehicle traffic, pedestrian noise, and reduced privacy, which are all safety issues for us. What we ask at the South Shores community is that the city staff and council keep South Shores condos in the loop during the design and engineering process. It might be best to also consider a couple options, one that includes the stormwater, drain, water improvements, and one that does not. The conceptual drawings that were shared with the public, they look wonderful, but also could be cost prohibitive and could extend that timetable. So maybe just build some attractive stairs that are widened, have a couple landings with lighting and landscaping that are ADA-compliant. Adaptive purpose building versus boathouse, there is a difference. Has the council looked at a boathouse-only option? I believe we've only really heard about the adaptive purpose building. How many boats will this boathouse hold? What are the dimensions that are being considered? Why not a boathouse in the center of the Marina in a commercial building in Parcel A where the hotel was initially proposed? Parcel A, what is the market value of Parcel A? It's been sitting vacant for years. How about a commercial building here that supports small business, such as a restaurant, brewery, winery, or maybe a dive shop and an office space for the harbor master or other? Again, maybe an adaptive purpose building is too much. And passenger-only ferry, consider a Gig Harbor, Ruston, Des Moines route. I think that would be wonderful. No bonus time needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Moving on to our last speaker for the night, Mr. Bill Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm here, first of all, to speak about something that surprisingly has been ignored throughout all these discussions about these improvements in the Marina, and that has to do with the maintenance of Dock Avenue. I think that we have, you have, we have all overlooked the importance of Dock Avenue because it provides that emergency access that very much could be needed if something ever happens on Cliff Drive or 223rd where it comes down from the city. I live on Dock Avenue, coincidentally, but I also think it's extremely important for particularly the adaptive purpose building and the condominium that's located immediately behind it. We heard Skylab talk about just putting a bulkhead directly up against the bank in front of that condominium, and I don't think that's safe. And the reason I don't is because if you have a fire in that adaptive purpose building, which there's a great possibility of happening, and it's loaded with boats, combustibles, and fuel, that could be a very bad fire, and you need access between that building above it and the adaptive purpose building. Now, I'm surprised Skylab didn't address that issue because I think that building stands at great potential to be very dangerous, and I would think that the residents of the condominium above it would be very concerned about that. It's also necessary because I think you need to have access for the fire trucks and for all other emergency vehicles to get up to the park again in case something happens on Cliff Drive. That's a very narrow street. You've all been down it. I looked at it again today. The distance across at the upper end between the bank, right about where the other street comes down and makes a sharp turn, across there, I bet you that's just about the width of 30 feet, which is the right-of-way, and that would not be enough. If you had a vehicle jackknife in there, if you had a fire truck get sideways or crosswise, or you had a bad accident, you had a slide on that hillside, which could result from an earthquake or something else, I think you'd depend absolutely on Dock Avenue being the means of access for any kind of emergency vehicle to get to your wood buildings that are located in the park, the beach park. That's a very precarious possibility, I think, and I think you should, in all of your plans for this area, you need to consider the importance, I think that street needs to be kept open, and it needs to provide access from the north end all the way to the south end of the Marina. The second thing I want to mention, just briefly, I have additional things in my remarks. The second thing is I think you should reconstitute the advisory board or advisory committee and have input from the Downtown Association and the Marina and all of the other neighborhoods in the city. I don't think you've had enough input from the wide areas of the city, and you need to have that before you proceed any further with this project. The third thing I want to say quickly is I think you need to develop the downtown and go down from there and not work from the Marina up. I think that downtown is what needs to be improved in order to draw people up from the waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. All right, Michael, I'm going to turn the floor over to you for the City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Fortunately, we have a really positive report tonight, and we've been blessed with resources from the American Rescue Plan Act funds that came from the federal government, from the CARES program that came from the federal government, and we were able to expand our engagement with a number of nonprofits providing services, essential services to our city. And tonight, fortunately, we have a presentation by one of those nonprofits, and I'm going to ask Rochelle Sims, who's our, I don't know, I don't have time between where you sat down and get to the podium, your titles, but I know she works as a management analyst, has been our domestic violence advocate, and has been involved in coordinating our human services advisory committee. So with that, Rochelle?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, City Manager Mathias. My name is Rochelle Sims, and before I introduce our next guest, I'll give a little bit of background. I do manage our human service contracts here with the city. So our advisory committee reviews all of the applications, and they make funding recommendations to the city council. Those recommendations were approved by the city council in November of 2022. So contracting with each respective agency quickly went underway by city staff, and now that all of that hard work is done, my goal is to invite agencies to come and present before council. This is also an opportunity to share with our community as a whole all the nonprofit agencies that we contract with, and then more importantly, for our community and residents to understand how they access those services if they need them. So when I say important work, that definitely does not adequately describe the work of this first agency. Tonight, we have the pleasure of welcoming Pediatric Interim Care Center. We, as a city, have funded this agency since 2017, and as you hear about the programs and the work that they do, you'll understand why this, we value this partnership with them so much. So with that, I will turn over to Elaine Purchase from Pediatric Interim Care Center. Thank you.
First of all, I would like to thank the city of Des Moines for being such a wonderful neighbor to us. We are actually located in the city of Kent, but we are a region-wide resource, and the South King County cities, their consortium, has been supportive of us for a number of years, and Des Moines, as part of that, has funded us with a human services contract since 2017. We're very grateful for those who have participated in providing this service that really, in essence, we could serve the entire state of Washington, but in realistic terms, we serve the greater Puget Sound region. Pediatric Interim Care Center, the newborn nursery, provides transitional care for drug-exposed newborns. We are the only facility that does this. We were the first in the country to see this need and to provide this service, and we are still the only one in the state of Washington and one of only a few in the country that have been successful in providing this, and we have been doing it now for 30 years. PIC was founded in 1990 in Kent in response to the need to provide a level of care that would be between hospital care and home care for this specific population of vulnerable newborns who have been prenatally exposed to drugs. Originally, these were largely cocaine-exposed newborns who were often premature at birth and needed a long period of care, and so what was missing in the healthcare system and in the social services system was basically a nursing home for babies, something between a hospital and home, something where these babies didn't need to stay in the hospital for 30 or 60 days, but at the same time, their fragility was to the point that they would not be safe at home. So that's why PIC was founded. That's what we still do. Over the years, all the drugs have changed. We've seen trend after trend of drugs. We started with the, what were then called the crack babies back in the 90s. We had the grunge era of heroin babies. We had the wave of methamphetamine babies, when they had the meth labs that were exploding out in the woods. And then we had the wave of prescription drug babies during the oxycodone and OxyContin era, and now we are seeing a lot of the babies who are exposed to, again, opiates, heroin, and now the big drug, of course, is menthol, and often, and usually, in fact, in combination with methamphetamine. So that's what we're seeing with the babies today, and that's who we take care of, these little ones. If I can figure out how to, where my little advance or is here, I'll, the right one. Here's a picture of our facility in Kent. We were able to build this building in 2004, started it in 2004, moved in 2006, at a time when we had outgrown the original, originally was founded in kind of the downtown doctor's offices that had been remodeled by Boeing employees to help us take care of the babies. But we had outgrown it, and it wasn't up to the safety standards. So we were able to build this, again, with the help of a lot of the South King County cities helped us build this building, as well as Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, Paul Allen, and many, many, many generous donors, especially from the South King County area. The infants that we take care of are, they come from every walk of life, from every socioeconomic group, from every racial group, from every ethnic group. Drugs have affected every, really, every family, if you look hard enough. What happens to these babies is that at some time during their pregnancy, their mothers have taken drugs. It isn't that pregnant women take drugs, it's that drug-addicted women get pregnant, and that's what happens to these little ones, so that they are exposed to drugs in utero, and when they're born, basically, their drug supply is cut off, and so they go through withdrawal from those. And what we see in adults is, as you know, painful and distressing. What we see in babies can be life-threatening. They can have seizures, they can fail to thrive. If there's no intervention and they are returned to drug-involved households, there could be abuse or neglect. So it's very important that we provide services at the time when these babies are at their most vulnerable point. The babies come to us from hospitals throughout Washington State, but again, it's primarily here in the Puget Sound region. We have a transport nurse team that goes out and picks up the babies from the hospitals and brings them to us. They stay about 37 days with us, and during that time, they're cared for by our experienced nursing staff. Our nursing staff consists of RNs, who are in charge of the medical care and our duty at all time, and then trained nurses aides that actually provide the infant care, the changing and diapering and burping and all that sort of stuff. And then the medical care is overseen by our pediatrician and medical director, who examines all the babies when they arrive and then makes rounds to check on their progress, and has been doing this, has been on call 24/7 for 30 years, even though he's now retired from his practice, he still does the babies. One of the things that we do with the babies is we provide a special kind of handling because these, one of the things we see across this population is that the babies are very hypersensitive to stimuli, which means they may not be able to abide light, sound, loud noises, even touch, sometimes even looking in their face is too much for them to bear. So our staff is trained in special handling techniques, things like the snug swaddling that keeps a baby who's having tremors from having to control their body, the way they're curled when they sleep, the way that they're rocked and handled is very important with these babies, so that they are able to relax and eat and sleep. For babies, especially those who have been exposed to heroin and other opiate drugs, they sometimes have a very, very distressful and difficult withdrawal, where they have severe tremors, that can, they can have seizures, they can have very severe diarrhea, and if you can imagine, it's like having, when you're born, having the world's worst headache and stomach cramps, and so these poor little ones can't eat or sleep, and it's without some kind of medication to help them. So for these babies, we do what's called narcotic-assisted withdrawal, which is that they receive very small drops of neonicotin morphine on a regular schedule, and then that slowly decreased over time as they're able to tolerate it until we're able to totally withdraw them from their dependence on the opiates. Especially with the large population of methamphetamine babies that we're seeing now, a lot of times, these... a lot of times, these babies are born without any fat on their body. They're like little birds. And they have no hunger reflex. They will sleep all night. A newborn who will sleep all night because they don't wake to feed. And when you do try to feed them, they hardly take any formula at all. And what can happen to these babies if they're not identified and taken care of is that they can slowly just fail to thrive, fall into malnutrition, and eventually lack brain development that can affect them for their whole lives. So we want to make sure that these little ones get the care that they need. And our staff is just absolutely expert at teaching these babies to eat. And that takes 30 to 60 days sometimes to bring them through this. But we're able to do it without feeding tubes, which is what are often used in hospitals when they address these kinds of problems. And the problem with that is, when you use a feeding tube, the baby doesn't learn to swallow. And that can be a lifetime problem that they'll have to deal with. Whereas if you take the time to sit there for 45 minutes every time they have to feed and expertly feed them, you can bring them through this. While the babies are going through withdrawal, we also, we invite and encourage and welcome their parents to visit. We actually have a social worker who works with them and provides transportation, lodging. If they live outside of the area, they can come stay in a hotel for two or three days a week so they can visit their baby. We always provide caregiver training for whoever's going to take the baby when they leave us, and infant supplies to go home with them. And then we have, our social worker follows them at home for six months to make sure that they're getting the services that they need. About half the babies go home with either a parent, who's usually, parents who are in treatment, or sometimes there might be a father who wasn't involved in the drug use. A lot of times, it'll be with a grandma or an aunt, somebody in the extended family. In fact, that's more likely to be the first placement. And then about half of them go into foster care. Of those that go into foster care, some may eventually go back to their families, and some will be adopted. And what on earth happened to the font there? I'm not sure. But what it's telling you is that since our founding, we have cared for more than 3,300 babies. Every single one of them has gone home to grow up and become the children and young adults that they are now. Our first baby, who's the bottom right-hand one with our founder Barbara there, is a mom with three children, and she lives in Des Moines. And we have college graduates, high school graduates. We have nurses. The upper-right graduate there, after she graduated from high school, came and worked for us as a nurse's aide, taking care of the babies while she was, during the summers when she went to college. The, in a way, kind of giving back to what had been given to her when she was a baby. And again, we just thank you so much for supporting us. And we really love having this opportunity to share what we do with you.
Thank you so much. A couple of quick questions. First of all, thank you for what you do. Just, it touches me that there's that service out there. A question I had, because you were answering them as you were going along, but, you know, especially these children that have gone through, you know, the drug addiction from the parent, particularly the mother and so forth. They are more susceptible to addiction as they grow older. Do you guys also, do you guys provide additional education? Or are they tapped to sources where?
Okay. The one, there are a couple of things. There are a million myths about these little ones that are not true. They, you know, they do just grow up to be children. Drug exposure, if they are able to get a healthy, a safe and healthy start in life and a good environment, they generally do as well as all children do. They're not that different than the general population. We do see two kind of persistent problems. One is that sensitivity to stimuli that can go on. And sometimes that can be read as ADD, because they just, they can be overwhelmed by stimuli. So especially when they go to school, it's a very stimulating environment. And so that can sometime be seen as ADD. And it isn't quite the same. But that's one of the things we try to work with our families on is to, there are ways that you can teach a child to manage stimuli, and the ways that you can help them manage stimuli, so that that doesn't become an ongoing problem. And the other thing is the danger of addiction. We don't know whether it's because of the prenatal exposure or if it's the genetic predisposition that they're getting from their parents, who obviously have that issue themselves. And we do see a lot of generational trends in this anyway. So that's another thing that we warn them about, that as a parent, that's one thing you've got to be incredibly vigilant about, because that could be an issue.
I'll let the city manager go, and then is.
Just a really quick follow-up. And it's phenomenal what you do. Thank you. And I know that all of us, the city and the council, myself, or staff, are so happy that we can contribute. Well, my question is, are there any studies or any understanding that later-life addiction is based on the drugs that they were addicted to as babies?
That's what we were just kind of talking about. That we're not sure if it's, if it has something to do, if it's the exposure, or if it's the genetic makeup they're getting from their parent, who obviously had an addiction issue in their lives. It's really hard to tease those things out. What is the genetic predisposition? How much did the exposure have to do with it? We don't know. And I don't think anybody does.
I'll go with Deputy Mayor Buxton and then you, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you so much for your work. Really, really appreciate it. I appreciated the ability to tour, I think, right before COVID, we got to go down. And I've done the walk, so I wanted to ask about the walk. You do a fundraiser once a year, and I wanted to ask when it was going to happen. If you could tell us a little bit about that and when it's going to happen this year.
We have two fundraisers a year. We haven't been, our big fundraiser, our major fundraiser for years was our annual luncheon. And we haven't been able to have it since the beginning of COVID. But I just found out today that we are going to go ahead with our luncheon on May 31st. And Doug Baldwin is going to join us as our guest speaker. He was, he's got to know us back in 2015, when he was with the Seahawks, and was our speaker in the Super Bowl year. And everybody's always wanted to get him back. So he's going to be with us then. And then our other event is our Walk for the Babies, which is in Kent at Showware Center, the first Saturday in October. So I'll provide information to Rochelle on those if anybody wants to get those. And I'll leave some cards, too, that just tell a little bit about us.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Just, so what, this is too big a question, but after 37 days, what does parenting look like? You know, what extraordinary tasks or does the parent have to, is there?
Well, we're hopefully at that, when we send the babies home, they are completely off medication, they are completely through their drug addiction. They are healthy, normal babies. The, so the ongoing problem I was mentioning they might have is that sensitivity to stimuli, and that's something that their caregivers have to be aware of and work with, not to overwhelm them with too many toys, too many people, busy, maybe not a busy daycare first right offhand. You know, that might not be something they can tolerate yet. So to introduce those kinds of stimuli slowly is the main thing. And, you know, it's so much, we don't have any say in where the babies go. They come to us as a temporary shelter care, foster care placement. And then it is the state DCYF that decides where the babies go from there. So we don't, and we don't really have any say in that, other than we have some input on being able to say what we saw while the baby was here. But that's really all. So so much has to do with how stable the environment is where the child's going.
But I mean, just the care and maintenance, for lack of a better term, I mean, is.
Not really that much different than it would be for any other child, than any other baby at that point. That's our goal. Our goal is that when they go home, they're basically ready to just be a baby.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Just kind of a follow-up. If the babies have come to you addicted, are they, the parent, I assume, is likely to be under supervision from the dependency court or DSHS? Isn't that correct?
You, sometimes yes, sometimes no. A good number of our moms have already gotten involved in treatment during their pregnancy. A lot of times, they, a lot of times, that's a methadone program or a subytex program, a maintenance program that also involves counseling and that sort of thing. So those babies may come to us as voluntary placements. They're, where they are going to go home to mom. So we have some babies that go home to mom in treatment. But that would probably be, the difference would be, the babies who come to us whose mothers are already involved in treatment. Would, that would just be a voluntary thing. And that, and those babies are going to go back to mom unless something happens, that there's a reason not to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll leave these here.
Rochelle, thank you. Thank you, ma'am, very much. That concludes our report for tonight, Mayor.
Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Black History Month proclamation. Item four, draft ordinance 23-003 related to designation of City Park. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting.
I approve the consent agenda as moved, as read.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Pennington on the second. Does any council member wish to move, remove an item?
Yes.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, I'd like to remove, what is it? It's council, it's item number four.
Okay. Councilmember Harris, did you have an additional item? Or was it item four you wished to remove?
No, Mayor, that's it.
Okay. So we'll be approving the consent agenda on items one, two, and three. All those in favor, raise your right hand. As it should be, passes unanimously. All right, with item four, Councilmember Oxiger, you.
You have to read the.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you for the correction. I need to read the, read this. And I'm going to have to pull out my glasses, because my print is fine. So apologize for that. "History, despite its wrenching pain, cannot be unlived. But if faced with courage, need not be we live again." That's Mary Angelou, author. "One's history is a fundamental aspect of one's culture experience. To deny one's history or to have others deny one's history creates a falsehood as to the nature of one's experience. Defining myself as opposed to being defined by others is one of the most difficult challenges I face." Carol Mosley Braun, first black US, female US senator. "The celebration of Black History Month is a recognition across the country of the experience and events occurring in the lives of African Americans and those whose roots run deep through the African diaspora. For I am my mother's daughter, and the drums of the Africa still beat in my heart." Mary McLeod Bethune, educator. "Acknowledgement of Black History points out that no one, no one culture, no one race possesses claims to be the dominant history of our nation. It is a shared history seen through many different eyes. In these days that have presented the challenge of America accepting the truth that Black Lives Matter, it is all more important to honor Black History. And the innumerable contributions made by African Americans, history seen through the eyes of people of color reveal in America that engenders hope for justice, but also retains strong currents of endemic racism. Whereas, Black History Month is celebrated in recognition of achievement and contributions made by African Americans and all people of African descent in the United States. And whereas, Black History Month affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about Black heritage and to honor the many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas, such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the strides that have been made in the crusades to eliminate barriers of equality, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination, injustice, and poverty. And whereas, the city of Des Moines embraces its diversity and acknowledgement and acknowledges the invaluable contribution of its African-American residents and visitors as we celebrate Black History Month. And now, therefore, the Des Moines Council hereby proclaims and recognizes the month of February as Black History Month and urges our citizens to join together in making this period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people. Sign this day, Mayor." All right, appreciate that. With item four, I'm going to turn the floor over to you, Councilmember Oxiger, since you pulled the item.
Yes, this comes with two motions. The first is to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 23-003 on first reading. This is usually held for emergency situations. What is the emergency with regard to needing to pass this tonight without putting it forward for further public comment?
I don't believe it's reserved for emergencies, Councilmember Oxiger. The council can waive Rule 26A in their discretion. If the council did not feel like they were prepared to adopt this tonight, our next council meeting is February 23rd. We talked at the committee meeting tonight about, once this is passed, we begin working with our vendor to look at doing speed studies for Redondo and potential sites for traffic cameras. So we would just be delaying that process for three weeks.
Okay, I, so the delay for three weeks, is this something that, is it possible to ask the police chief what impact this would have on what he's trying to do?
It would delay it by three weeks. So, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it would delay the decision to get going for at least three more weeks. And I think the important part to consider, at least for the five years that I have worked here in the city, it has been a significant issue, a big deal, for the Redondo community to really address the issues down in Redondo. So the next steps, once this ordinance passes, if it passes, then I contact the company, they do a study. And then if the study is good, then they do implementation, and they get permits, and they put the equipment in, and they test it, and they get it going. And our hope, my hope as the police chief, is we can get this up and running before the weather gets warm, more people are out on the street. And the whole reason we're doing this is for the safety of our community. So the longer we delay that, the longer that it pushes the project out into the summer. And we really want to get this going and keep our community safe in that area.
Can I, can I get a motion first before we go? Because that's what we're talking about.
I was basically going to say the same thing as the chief. So with that, I have no problem making the motion. We've heard from the Redondo residents. I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 23003 on first reading.
I got a second from Councilmember Pennington. I saw you two. So basically, what we're going to talk about and discuss is the suspension of Rule 26A, and that only. So with that, I'll start with, you had the floor before, so I'm going to give it to Councilmember Oxiger, then Councilmember Steinmetz, then Deputy Mayor Buxton, and then Councilmember Harris. Okay, so go back.
Thank you, Chief. That's, that, you know, summation is, you know, this is the type of reason why we should suspend the rule is to try and get this thing enacted, because we do have a summer situation coming up. So, and this is a case where I usually, you know, I'm not in favor of suspending Rule 26A, but I think this is a justified case. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
I agree with Councilmember Oxiger. I'm generally not in favor of enacting, suspending Rule 26A in order to speed things along. I think it gives for a better deliberative process. But for those of us that are familiar with the history of this, this has been through a long deliberative process, really trying to come up with a plan that's going to be effective and work in response to the complaints that we've had from the people of Redondo. So I do think that this is one of those situations where we have had the deliberative process. We know what the public feels about this. There's been plenty of chance for input. And so I think suspending Rule 26A is appropriate under these circumstances, particularly given the timeline that the chief just reiterated.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Ditto.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
So how long will the study take?
Sir, we're just talking about 26A.
Well, that's relevant to basically the urgency of. Well, that's relevant to, um, basically the urgency of implementing this, uh...
Okay. Fair enough, just wanna make sure clarification.
Two weeks from now, that's... I, I don't know. I, I, I will tell you, uh, in this case, as I've, uh, mentioned earlier, uh, in the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee, because this is such a priority, I feel, for the Redondo community, not only did I communicate with the company, uh, that puts in the red light cameras and the, the speed zone cameras, um, I started communicating with them at the end of last year, and actually, two meetings ago, I spoke with the president of the company, and I said, "Look, I'm the police chief representing this community, we feel this is important. If these issues get approved, I wanna get this thing done as quickly as I can." Now, I've learned in dealing with public works projects, the chief's idea is quickly as I can, and engineers is a little bit different, but I went right to the top of the company and said, "Please, make this a top priority." So I, the answer to your, that's a long answer to the question, I, I just don't know, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Any more discussion before we take a vote? Okay, all those in pa, uh, favor of motion one, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven-zero. Is there any discussion about motion? Go ahead.
I was just gonna make the second motion.
Thank you.
To enact draft ordinance number two-three dash zero zero three, amending chapter one-nine-point-one-two DMMC to include Redondo boardwalk and adjacent city-controlled tidelands within Redondo Beach Park.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Steinmetz. Discussion? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just as a point of clarification, what, um, is the geography that would be, uh, applicable to having a speed camera? Is it the boardwalk going north-south, or is there opportunity east-west in any of the, uh, area?
Yeah, I think that, um, it's important to understand, this is the preliminary aspect of this process. The council is approving us to move forward, and what this does is designate parks that were included in state legislation to expand kind of the options to utilize these cameras. And, and the questions associated with that would be answered in the process prior to implementation. Is that fair? Yeah.
So that's, so I can't answer the questions before we've done the research.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Oxiger.
I'd just like to thank everybody for moving this along. Uh, as I said, uh, it's been twenty-five years, it's now twenty-six, that, uh, since, uh, Redondo and Woodmont annexed into the city, and this was a priority from day one as far as trying to do something about the, the horrific, uh, traffic and, and, uh, problems that we have down in Redondo. So, I enthusiastically am going to vote yes for this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of motion two? Motion passes seven-zero. Congratulations, you have a new park.
Yay!
All right. Getting on to old business, we are gonna go with the reallocation of American Rescue Act funds.
And let me introduce that a little bit. Jeff Friend is available, our finance director, if, if there's specific questions. But we, um, have been tracking our use of the ARPA money, and this has been based, some of it was based on, um, the emergency needs associated with COVID, and a number of those were addressed. Other ones, there were funds left over, so we're recommending to council, um, about five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars of the reallocation of ARPA funds out of a total of about nine-point-two million that the city has received and, and designated in prior meetings. So, um, I don't know if you have specific questions. You can see on page two of the agenda item what the, the projects are where there were funds left over and, or, or not utilized to date, and there's also, um, recommendations for the reallocation of those funds. The numbers essentially match, and, uh, with that, if there are questions or if council wants to take action, that's where we are.
Right. Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I don't have a question, I'd like to make the motion.
You may.
I move to approve the recommended reallocation and expenditure of unspent American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Second? Second from Councilmember Nutting. Discussion? Councilmember Oxiger.
These funds, uh, were intended to help us, uh, you know, cope with COVID and the things that gone. I think, one of the biggest disasters that has happened, uh, with COVID, COVID is what it has done to, uh, the education of our children. Um, we're looking at kids have basically lost an entire year of education. They're behind, they need help. One of the things that we used to do in this city is we used to have before and after-school programs at each of the elementary schools, now it's consolidated at the fieldhouse. Uh, that makes it difficult transportation-wise for the, the parents, but also the need for tutoring to help these kids. Um, I think that this, this money, the five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-eight, uh, dollars would be much better used to helping our kids. There's nothing more important. We had the, the, uh, presentation earlier here about, you know, helping kids, um, you know, we're talking about throughout the city, it's just been disastrous, and, you know, passenger ferry, you know, kids, kids with me win every single time, so I would oppose, uh, the motion.
City manager?
Yeah, council member, I think a couple of things. Um, so doing the, and I'm not quite sure you're talking about before and after, you're talking about tutoring, but the, the idea is that, first of all, it's been very difficult to acquire park staff to run these programs, absolutely difficult. Um, the other thing is that the, the inherent characteristic of the ARPA funds are used as one-time monies, because there is no structural follow-up to keeping those in place. And the one place where we did do that, council did approve, was creating some, um, police officer positions, that we will be on the hook to establish what's the ongoing long-term structural support for those positions, even though they were funded originally out of the ARPA funds. So, um, those are certainly fair discussions, I think, to have during the budget process relative to what would be the structural impacts of doing tutoring. I'm, I think that we work closely with the district, the school district, and I think that's really their sort of bailiwick in terms of knowing how to do those types of things better than we are, but that's not to say we wouldn't support that if council was so inclined, but I think that that's a much larger discussion personally.
Um, I would also add, I was just looking at the next page of the ARPA money, the nine million received, we dedicated a million dollars to Parks and Recreation already, so, um, with that, um, and I think there's a value in the ferries and stuff like that, so.
Well, uh, the thing is, is that, okay, we did allocate the money to Parks and Rec, but the programs are not open, and these are bef, a lot of times, these are before and after-school programs. This is where parents, uh, the high cost of, of daycare, uh, is, you know, has been devastating to, to the, to, uh, our families. Uh, this money should go to the kids, I'm sorry.
So you, are, are you making a motion? Is that what you did, to dedicate the five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand to?
I would, I would, uh, make an amendment to, uh, transfer the monies towards, uh, providing, uh, support for, uh, kids that have been impacted negatively by COVID.
Okay. And, if I may, there's, there's always been a problem with parks in terms of helping those who cannot help themselves, in terms of, how do we document that? How do we establish a fair process? What's the research involved? What's the threshold? That's never been done. So to say we wanna help people that need help is great. How do we go about doing that? It's never really been established, right? But the other thing I wanna point out is that we have a number of daycares in the city, both associated with churches and associated with private sector, okay? And one of the things I think we want to avoid is competing with the private sector by undercutting their price structure. We want those businesses to be successful, we don't wanna take on the, the, the responsibility of undercutting their prices.
All right, I need a second first, if, on his motion.
On his?
Yes, let's, let, because we're gonna take this, because it, unfortunately, the other one, the motion, they're directly, um, well, I guess we're, we're moving to approve the recommendation, reallocation, and expenditure of unspent rescue funds, so we're all in agreement that those get allocated, right? Where the money goes on the second motion is probably the discussion, so, um...
Mayor, just to clarify, um...
Do I have that correct or not?
Uh, the city manager administration has recommended reallocation, so we're still on the first motion, so...
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Oxiger is moving to amend that, to change the recommended reallocations to something else, so we need a second on his motion, then we can vote on that.
Yes, and then go to the first one again? Okay, I have a s-
I have a, I have a comment, Mayor.
Or do, are you, but do we have a second before we start this conversation?
Uh, I cannot provide a second for that particular, uh...
Well, then the motion will die from lack of a second, unless somebody's gonna second it. Seeing none, sorry, Councilmember Oxiger, we're moving on to the first motion. Okay, um, so Councilmember Harris, I'll let you go next.
So, um, uh, I would, uh, support an amendment removing passenger ferry service, uh, just putting it back, um, because there is no urgency to allocating this money tonight, and, um, the reason I did not provide a second is that, um, when we went through this process, um, there was a, uh, utility assistance program, and, um, and it, to say the least, underperformed, um, and, uh, this is the kind of thing, I don't wanna give a blank check on anything. I would fully support putting the money back and then come up with a specific proposal, and, you know, I, I'd be happy to, uh, but basically, I just wanna put this money back and think about it.
Okay, so, do is he, does he have a second?
That's Councilmember, uh, Harris's motion.
Yes.
I will second it.
Okay. Any future, further discussion before we go to the original motion?
Uh, yes. Just in response, uh, this is not reinventing the wheel. We had before and after-school programs at each one of the elementary schools before. It's not like, you know...
We're in a border, Mayor.
Yeah, this isn't pertaining to the motion. The, that motion had died from lack of a second, so we're just talking about him remo, taking the money back to, removing the money from allocation and delaying the process. Did I have that correct, Mr. Harris?
You did.
Okay, and that's what you seconded.
Okay.
If you have a point to discuss, none?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Well, I just want to, uh, clarify, um, the, uh, original idea for utility assistance was a very specific thing, um, we, you know, Councilmember Martinelli and I, we had a discussion about, uh, how could we help as many people as quickly as possible? And, um, that night, due to the, the expeditious nature of it, it turned into a blank check, um, that went only to puke its sound, and, uh, and it just took forever, and so I'm just always in favor of just, if you've got time, just take a while, put down a specific proposal, and let's, let's do that, I'm with you all the way. Thank you.
City manager with eyes.
Yeah, um, so that program was, um, utilized through PSE, I believe. They had programs in place, people identif, who identified needs were served, there was no terrible, horrible, long delays, lights didn't go out in people's homes, because PSE responded, because that's what, they're an energy company, and that's what they're set up to do. We were able to pay our residents directly through PSE. So that was a very, I think that was one of the most efficient programs, and you can see that the demand for what was allocated by the council did not meet, or, or the, the allocation exceeded demand, but no one was turned away.
If, if I may, that, that, that wasn't the point, the, the, it was a question of public awareness and providing more options. I mean, regardless of, uh, what you say, um, the, we had a slightly different intention, and so all I'm suggesting is that it's worth taking, uh, a couple of weeks and having something more specific, um, just to make sure that, uh, what we pass actually gets implemented as intended. Um, thank you.
Any further discussion before I take a vote? Councilmember Nut, I mean, Pennington.
We get confused often because of the beer.
Yes.
Um, so, i- if I'm understanding this correctly, the, Councilmember Harris, which funds are you asking to remove and, and, and put back to, to, to look at? Is it the, the ferry service funds, or, or, or is the one up above?
Yes, my, my, no, my understanding was that, um, we saved so much money on the, we did not spend, um, like, less than half of the, uh, money already allocated, um, last year, so it seems to me that we have a certain amount of money to run the second test, and we don't need this four-hundred thousand, so let's put it back and, um, think about something else, run the, you know, run your ferry test and, um, you know, see how it goes, and, uh, you know, then we can spend it somewhere else, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, any Councilmember Steinmetz? Can I see you, Deputy Mayor?
Point of information, I understood Councilmember Harris's motion to include the five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-eight...
Yes, it was all the money.
Not just the ferry funds.
No, I said four-hundred thousand.
Of the five-hundred-and-sixty-five?
Yeah. The Marina infrastructure, I mean, we're gonna do the feasibility study, the Arts Commission, I'm all on board with that, um, I can see spending that stuff, but the four-hundred grand, um, put that back for another day. Is that...
And, and I'm still confused, what does "put it back" mean?
It means put it back into the, do not allocate it for...
Asking the city manager to see if he understands what your motion is, because I'm confused.
Um, I won't, I, I will be not so rude as to agree with you. Um, but the thing about it is, is that there was, this is money that needs to be allocated by thirty-first of December twenty-twenty-four and spent by the thirty-first of December twenty-twenty-six. So what we've anticipated, and I, I hope that we mentioned this when we first said we would bring this back, is that this may be the first of several discussions about the reallocation of funds based on the utilization of those funds. So when you say "put it back," I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm equally confused, I don't know exactly what that means. Apparently, it, it may mean that there's four-hundred thousand dollars of excess that remains unallocated. I'm not, I, that's...
I do not wish to allocate four-hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money to the passenger ferry fund.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Is there any intent to allocate that four-hundred somewhere else, or do you want it to sit unallocated? That's what I'm not clear about.
I want it to sit unallocated for the next, uh, opportunity.
Okay, I had Deputy Mayor Buxton. You raised your hand?
Hmm, I have a comment. My comment has to do with, now, we're in the middle of his motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We're, we're, it's, it's just making it unallocated again.
I have a comment on the next.
All right. Any further discussion? Councilmember Oxiger?
I would just like to make, you point out that if we do allocate the four-hundred thousand, then it's gone. There can be no further discussion, so I, I fully support holding, holding this until, you know, we decide in the future where to put it.
All right. Let's go ahead and take a vote. That four-hundred thou, with Councilmember Harris's motion, that four-hundred thousand dollars go back to unallocated for a decision to be decided later. All those in favor, raise your right- All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, I can see Councilmember Oxger, I see Councilmember Steinmetz. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. Motion fails for three, four. All right, we're back to the first motion. So these are the funds, the passenger ferry 400, 400,000, Marina Infrastructure 115,000, Arts Commission 50,000. Yes, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of ARPA, if you go look it up on any number of websites, basically is for the support of housing, economic development, and/or to provide other public benefit for residents. So this falls under that. In, in regard to this ferry, supporting the ferry service and an extended pilot, which is what we're going to be considering here in the future, there, since I've been elected, there almost, there hasn't been anything so universally exciting, accepted, looked, looked forward to, if you could say that, whole, in, in, just across the board, the amount of community support for this. So it's, I would look forward to supporting it. I wanted to make a couple of statements and read some data about the expenditure of ARPA funds on ferry systems. So there's precedence for using it. Distributions of around 900 million in federal COVID relief funds have been allocated to transit agencies around the Puget Sound. Washington State Ferries have spent, allocated about $90 million for operating capital projects through ARPA, state ferries. Between Port Angeles, Clough County, and the state, they've allocated over $8 million in ARPA funds for ferry service. The US government is interested in funding successful passenger ferry programs and has invested $36 million in 22, in 2022 alone, with an additional 49 million for low to no carbon fuel vessels. So this country, this state, this region, PSRC, everybody's interested in ferry service, passenger ferry service. So an allocation of ARPA funding into ferry service, especially passenger ferry service and potential electric service, is more than appropriate and will be extremely beneficial to our community. So I approve this allocation.
Councilmember Oxger.
And our kids are hurting.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
You know, this is basically a, a question of, we've got some free money, where are we going to spend it? And, you know, I, I am persuaded that spending one-time money on trying to restart before and after school programs is probably not a good idea. We need to make sure we have a funding stream that brings that forward. And it's not that I don't like that idea. I think we do need to get the before and after school care back into the schools if we can. But, you know, this is not, just because we have a chunk of change sitting around that's not going to be there next year is not the way to go about putting that program together. So I really don't think that is a, an appropriate way to do that. As far as the passenger ferry service is concerned, that would probably not be my first choice. As was word to put it, I don't know, I mean, frankly, I think it's a bigger conversation about how we're going to fund the ferry in the future, which is not to say I'm not supportive of funding the ferry. I am very much so, but I think that's a, it's a bigger conversation. However, you know, I think I will be voting for this because I think we do need to allocate the money and get it, the structure in place of how we're going to spend that. And as a consequence, I'm going to support the motion as written.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, and I recognize you, Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Pennington, and Councilmember Nutting. Did, Council, Deputy Mayor Buxton, you were first.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I waved my hand.
Okay.
There, there are before and after school programs through Highline Public Schools, and they partner with other agencies. And so it's not like the kid, that the kids have nothing. So that's all I'm going to say.
I, I had an order, I had Councilmember Harris, you were next, Pennington, and then you, Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. In the immortal words of former Mayor Dave Kaplan, "One-time money for one-time expenses." A commute, a ferry has two purposes, either tourism or commuter. There is no financial case to be made for commuter service. And when you use one-time money for an ongoing structural service, like commuter ferry service, you're basically taking money away from an appropriate one-time purpose, such as a capital project for a park and all these other monies that we, you know, there's a reason that we have so many services, and we go, man, why do we never have the money for it? And it's like, well, duh, and that's it.
Councilmember Pennington.
So as I understand, the 400,000 is, is to continue with the feasibility of, of the ferry service and that the, to see if the ferry service will be self-sustaining in the future. Is that correct, City Manager?
Okay, so I think that we did phase one, it was very, very successful, both the revenue and the ridership. We're coming back to council saying we'd like to proceed with phase two, which would have expanded service and commuter service, and look in the future toward electrification of a ferry and all of that. But that would be something that would have, at that point, it would have to become a regional effort. Because the city, and I think to the great credit of the council, picked up the cost last year and showed the success of it. And we'd like to continue to build on that. But in the future, there's going to have to be resources from other entities. The gentleman, one of the public speakers, said we should have Gig Harbor and Point Ruston. And we've had those discussions, yeah, those are great ideas. They're also very expensive ideas. And so until everybody's playing equally and participating, whatever equally means, but participating for their share between the state and PSRC and the federal government and regional governments and city governments, until all those are coordinated, that's what we're trying to get to, but we're not anticipating ever that the city would shoulder this in the long term.
Okay, so we have an opportunity to, with some money that, that was provided by the federal government, that we wouldn't normally have had this opportunity to further explore the ferry service relative to a, a regional approach. And so we are one of the cities that, that happens to, to have a marina where this can be based out of. And so I think it's, it's, it's one-time monies to find out some answers that we would normally not have had money to, to find those answers to. I think that's a, a good use of those dollars. To my colleagues' comment about one-time monies for, for, you know, ongoing expenses, yeah, you're darn right. You don't spend one-time money for, for, you know, ongoing expenses. We got, that's why the city was almost bankrupt, because of that practice. So you, you, I would love to see the city work with the school district on an enhanced after-school program, but one-time monies, we throw at it, and then who's going to pick up the rest of the dime? So that's the kind of, of budgeting that got us into trouble a few years back. And, and that was a shell game that the city management at that time played, and, and it, it came to a head. So, you know, I would support down the road if we have permanent monies to do after-school programs and to help work with the school district and support those programs. I don't think that this use of, of a, let's set, let's, let's start a new program and get it here, and then maybe it falls off. I, I don't know that that's fair to the kids, you know. Anyway, that's it.
Councilmember Nutting, then I see you, Councilmember Oxger.
I just, I was hoping to go after Deputy Mayor Buxton to dovetail with hers. Highline has programs that they run before and after school, and they're not being utilized to allocate city funds to the kids, which I'm all about. I always have been. I have school-aged kids, and I've always been about the kids. But to allocate city funds to programs that are not being utilized right now by Highline Public Schools, it, it just doesn't seem the right thing to do. And, and again, one-time funds for an ongoing thing, I, I just, let's get the kids signed up for the Highline programs, and I'd, come back to me with a budget amendment, and I'll be glad to allocate funds to that. But they're, they're programs that are not being used right now.
Councilmember Oxger.
They're not being utilized now because we have centralized the, the before and after school programs to the fieldhouse. The programs we had in place before were at the individual elementary schools, much more accessible to the families and the kids. So, and, and the fact that what, you know, it's, what we're playing is, we're trying to play catch-up to a problem that occurred because of COVID. The, hopefully, we would get to the point where we, we've made some progress as far as catching up. And so what better use of one-time monies than to, you know, help those kids overcome a known problem?
All right, well, I'm going to bring us back into this, the particular items on the extended, the, the, this, this particular item. The one thing about the ferry seems to be the question, and what I want to, what I'd like to say is, this is an opportunity to extend services. It was a great benefit to our residents, and we want to explore that more and give them more opportunity. It brought business to our community, it was an economic driver. And the, the PR we got, the attention we got, was invaluable. People knew we were on the map, so it was valuable. With that, let's go, go ahead and take a vote on first mo, on this motion. How many, all those in favor of the motion to approve the recommended reallocation expenditures of unspent American Rescue Plan Act facts, Rescue Plan Act funds, please raise your right hand, say aye. I see Councilmember Pennington, I see Councilmember Steinmetz, I see Deputy Mayor Buxton, I see Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxger. Motion passes five, two. So the next motion, does somebody want to read it? So we can get going on it? Oh, I have it. I will, okay, Councilmember Steinmetz.
I, I need to direct the administration to prepare a budget amendment to incorporate the approved reallocation and expenditure of ARPA funds and include such amendment in the next available budget amendment portion.
Okay, since we talked this pretty mu, do you have a second? Councilmember Nutting has a second. Since we talked this subject to almost exhaustion, I'll take one round before we take a vote. If anybody has any comments or questions. Seeing none, okay, all those in favor of the second motion, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxger, motion passes five, two. All right, we're moving on to the Marina Development Direction from, for city, from City Council. Michael, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. What we're asking of council, as we, you know, identified last week at the at the study session, is for council to direct us to move forward with conducting feasibility studies for the public works projects we identified for the landside Marina redevelopment. And this is, I've received a lot of commentary about people that want, well, before you can vote on this, let's see your cost estimates, or let's see the design, or let's see the planning. This is to allow us to proceed with all of those because we don't take action that costs resources without council approval and direction. So we're asking for you to direct us to perform the feasibility studies, and we will then come back to you in a number of forms, not the least of which is, anything that's going to be recommended will show up in the capital improvement plan that the city council must approve as part of the budget process. And we will also come back for how, what would be the cost structure. You would have decisions about the kind of elements you want included in the different options. For example, Marina steps, there's a number of ways to do that. We want council to determine how they want to proceed with the information we can help provide you with, from the consultants. So this is simply to start the process of evaluating the public works projects on the Marina floor, and those include the Marina steps, adaptive purpose building, possibly tenant and a public restroom, and a pavilion that would include kind of an overhang for the farmer's market and other uses. So we would want to bring those back.
Councilmember Nutting.
I didn't, I didn't see a formal motion, but I move to approve the feasibility, feasibility study of the public works portion of the Marina redevelopment, including the steps and everything aforementioned by City Manager Mathias.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Questions and discussion, Councilmember Harris.
Doesn't a study usually come with at least, you know, an outline of a budget?
Would depend on the type of, it would, yes.
Just that, I'm just, in other words, when would the feasibility be feasible? And, and what would be the work product? I'm just, I'm just asking because we've had at least, we've gotten three grants from the Port of Seattle. And see, this is why I come across as so stroppy, but we've had three feasibility studies. There's a geotech report, you know, discussion of like an MSC wall, and, and so I'm just, I just want to know what, I'm a dumb engineer, what are we studying? You know, what's the budget? And when do we come back and to the next decision point? I don't want to argue with anybody, but that's, you know, what I'd like to know.
I would like to see this to at least include some process for surveying the public as to what it wants.
I think what we will do is, based on what we presented to City Council, we will provide you with much more specific kind of look at what would be involved, and that's ultimately going to be direction from council as to how to proceed. And I would assume that City Council, as it has always done in this process, will solicit input from the public relative to decisions related to moving forward.
Councilmember Oxger.
I would move to amend the motion to formally put it in the motion to have the public process. And that the public process be, begins at the start of this.
Councilmember, you know, I think that we have had multiple meetings. We would intend to have multiple more. I don't know that you need to put this into the feasibility motion to move forward with feasibility. We'll take that information, share it with council, get public input, all of that. That's just been a part of the nature of doing this. If you want to make it explicit, you're certainly welcome to do that, but I'm not sure it's necessary, based on what we're asking for, which is simply to move forward with feasibility analysis.
All right, do we have a second for his amendment to the motion? Seeing none, lack of interest, we will move on to the motion at hand. Councilmember Harris, this will be your second time.
So again, you know, the reason, it, it's not for lack of desire to have public input. It's just that, again, there, there are like no measurables in, you know, what exactly entails a community survey. And I, I just, I don't think that any of this jazz can be decided ad hoc. There, there really needs to be a discussion of what would that community survey look like? We're just so far away from, it, it's just, yeah, I don't want to do something worse by doing something hasty. It doesn't mean I don't want to do something. It's just that you should have an item on the agenda that, where we discuss what exactly would a community survey entail? And I just don't think we're, and what that, because we don't have a Citizens Advisory Committee. We don't have a Public Planning Commission. We don't even have like the framework to. have a a discussion where you would come to a work product that would be useful for the entire city. And I'm happy, I would love to have that kind of meeting. We did not have that. We had four whopping, basically, yes-no questions at the uh study session. I'm sorry, I really need to have that surgery. Um, yeah, so um, well, yeah, I I would love to have another discussion, but I will not vote for uh this tonight until we um decide what it is we're driving towards. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
I just, I have a point of clarification. Um, the public works projects for the landside Marina development, as I understand it, those were well-defined in the study session. They were defined as well, yeah, in in the September twenty-twenty-two um, the presentation, and it goes all the way back to the Argosy boat, when everybody was picking what those, what those projects were. Is is this something different, or?
Councilmember, that's, those are fair. There were a couple of things in there. The second, the first one is, the most recent large-scale meeting was at the Yacht Club, which came after the Argosy. And we have boards with the selections of our citizens based on what their preferences are. We have a number of boards with the dots still in them, and everything was moving forward. That was held at the Yacht Club in September of twenty-nineteen. In October of twenty-nineteen, council authorized us to proceed with an RFQ, and that ran head-on into COVID. So there was a two-and-a-half-year delay. That, you know, and then we pick up the ball now, and uh, you know, for a couple of reasons that we explained, the developer that we had just, you know, chosen to work with, didn't work out. So we're somewhat back to the drawing board, but this time we're recommending that we do our portion of this. And then the future is what the future holds, but we're not going to design that now relative to any private participation that we're aware of. It's going to be public participation. That, you're absolutely right. We've done design analysis, we've done feasibility analysis, we've looked at the financing of it, and now we want to put all those pieces together and come to council and say, what's your wish?
Councilmember Oxger, yours.
Does that, I'm sorry, does that answer your?
I I think, yes, yes, it does. So it really hasn't changed.
Right.
Over over time, so if anybody's been paying close attention, which I know a lot of people have, what is, you know, what we're asking for, directing you to fi- determine the feasibility of, has been defined since two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and yet, I understand there are an awful lot of people that want to slow this down, that think uh now they don't uh, they keep throwing public input. There's been a fair amount of public input on this. Um, and, you know, I I just don't get why we're not anxious to get something done. And that's what we need to do. So I'm gonna support this motion. I think this is the right thing to do, and I think this is exactly what we want you to then bring us back the numbers and tell us what this is gonna cost and how long it's gonna take, because that's what I understand as a feasibility study.
We're anxious to do that.
Councilmember Oxger, your second time.
And COVID has intervened. It's totally upended the way we do things. You know, we're talking about what was the opinions four years ago. Okay, look at downtown Seattle. Look what's happening to uh our industries. I mean, people talk about getting, you know, grocery store downtown, and the thing is, is that the the grocery industry, because of consolidations and everything else, is moving on in a different direction, and, you know, things have changed dramatically because of COVID. And I think we need to go back and assess from the public what they want to do.
Councilmember, you've already had your two times.
May I have fifteen seconds, please?
I'll give you fifteen seconds, and that's it.
So all people need to do when they walk out of here is look at Wagner Phase Two, March twenty-twenty-one, September twenty-seven, Skylab, and then what we looked at uh last week. And you tell me if the buildings, even the buildings are the same, and the locations of the buildings are the same.
All right.
Three pictures. Thank you.
You've had your fifteen seconds. Thank you. Um, I'm, it's Councilmember Pennington.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, with Councilmember Steinmetz, you know, there's been a lot of public input. We've certainly got a lot of public input recently. The the um, the take, couple of takeaways from that was no hotel, which I don't believe that's even feasible to do. Um, and yeah, we want some reasonable um development done at the Marina, something that makes sense. And I think that um what we're asking staff here is to look, take the input that they've got before, the input we've gotten recently, and and give us, you know, the the, what makes sense, what's feasible to do there. And I think, you know, if we don't ask them to do this, you're gonna have the same conversation next year, and the year after, and the year after, and until, you know, you get tired of it, I guess. But um, I I think we're asking them to do exactly what we've received in feedback from the public, in in several iterations over the period of time. So I think that that we'll get answers, and I think we'll have another opportunity to to um then take a look at that and say, that makes sense, that doesn't make sense. We'll get input again, I hope, from from our residents. And, you know, it's it's where are you gonna put the the building blocks around here? You know, the one constant seems to be the the stairway, the pathway, or whatever you want to call it, that seems to be the constant. But where do the other building blocks go around there, and what are they, and and what do they do? And that's what we're asking staff to give recommendations, so that we can make a decision. And and that decision comes with additional input from all of you. That that's the way I see this in in this motion. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I I wasn't necessarily gonna use this quote, because it's like, there's so much going on tonight, but because there's so much passion at the table here, um, my colleague said a few weeks ago, on January twelfth, that Councilmember Harris said, if the public could go back to the UW studies of two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, et cetera, they would go, wow, because they include the exact solutions that everybody's talking about, and they would make people happy. Now, that was, my colleague said that a few, just two or three weeks ago. So now we're here, kind of, and then we saw, so that's what we did. And then later, the end of January, we saw the recommendations that of today were not, um, were really very similar, um incredibly similar to the recommendations made by the pla- past planning commissions and the UW teams. This means that the plans now have stood the test of time and age. The UW students of two thousand eight are in their thirties now, which is really the public that we're building for, right? So I guess, I I am so in favor of moving forward and finding out more information. It's just a little frustrating that the same people that said, oh, this is what you should do, we did, and now there's frustration about that. Um, I just want uh some more data sets, and that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
All right, um, I'll just add a couple of things. One, to Councilmember Oxger's point about the grocery store, being in the business, it's about density. That that that's how you get a grocery store downtown. We have many factors, as I mentioned the week before, where we have economic drivers. The Marina is is a big part of those, along with several other things, to get that density downtown. And that's important. For thirty, thirty, what, nineteen eighty-four, so we're talking thirty-nine years, we've been talking about this. It's time to move forward and go forward. The public will be part of the process, but everybody's not gonna be exactly thrilled with everything, but they're probably gonna be ninety percent satisfied. It's just gonna be part of the process here. This is basically, let's go and let's find out what it costs, and let's see if we can get it done. That's all we're doing tonight. The rest comes along. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, or did we even get a motion? I'm, it's been a long night. We did? Great, thank you. All those, sorry, man, it's been a long night. Uh, all those in favor of the motion um to conduct the feasibility study, raise your right hand. I see Deputy Mayor, I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Oxger. The motion passes five-two. All right. Introduction of items for future consideration. This is the time for sole purpose of proposing new items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on future agenda. This is not the time for questions of old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any council members have new business they would like to propose? Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yes, and I'd like to invite everybody to stay for a second, because I'm gonna propose something affecting the Marina development. But my proposal is that uh we figure out a way, at a minimum quarterly, to hold Marina update uh sessions, so that the public has a chance to hear what it is that's happening, and also give some input on that. These are not council meetings. We're not adding additional council meetings. No business will be conducted, but they're informational out to the public, and I think that would be something that everybody wants, more information.
Or just when there's new information, you know, like.
That's why I say minimum quarterly.
I have a question.
He he, he's gonna, he has a a couple of comments about clarification and when it's relevant, when it might be.
So what we, what we could do is just um probably under city manager report, just every quarterly, put that item, and then if there's an update, give the update, and if there's no change in status, say there's no change in status, or this is in process.
I I don't think that gets to what I'm trying to get to, which is a more public exchange uh where um it doesn't necessarily have to be the city manager at this putting that information out there, but somebody who is knowledgeable, who can say, these are, this is what's happening, and answer questions accordingly, uh if they're even answerable at that point. But at least there's some dialogue, uh and people are getting more information about what's going on.
Right. But Councilmember T, I would just mention that, there's a couple of dynamics here, and it wouldn't be fair not to mention it. But apparently, uh, there's at least one council member that's insistent upon putting out misinformation. So a lot of the time is spent putting out fires for things that are not true. Okay, um, the other thing is not to mistake that we have multiple interactions with, quote, "the public" all the time, and get inputs and go out in the community and and receive understanding. And it tends to be those that are most, feel they're most affected, tend to show up the most, because they have a a direct interest in the outcome. There are other people who live further away from the Marina, don't even have views of the water. They're less, you know, they're supportive, they ride the ferry, but they're not as engaged. We'll be happy to provide the public with any and all information that we acquire in a timely manner, and I just don't want to get caught in a situation where the expectation is, okay, what's next, and we don't have what's next. So when it would be appropriate, be happy to do that, what you're describing. Any way you want. You can put it on an agenda, and then we just say, okay, well, this this month, we write an agenda item, or tell you whatever is going on.
I have a question, just to clarify what he wants. So at least when we're answering him, we know what he wants.
So really quick, the thing is, is that I think that um this is one of those opportunities where we might be able to do the city's managers' um portion prior to some public comment or something like that, where we can work it in. Having and organizing separate, you know, meetings for the public and everything, states of the city, they're they're quite quite an ordeal to get put together in time. And three months and stuff like that, the increments are are pretty tight in those kind of regards. I think we can kill two birds with one stone, if that's acceptable to you. If we did something where that information was put out, and then I just moved the public comment, particularly to that subject afterwards, to just hear feedback from the public. And of course, they've got the email and stuff like that.
I'm, I'm just trying to get it out of the.
I I know, I under-
Out of the city council meeting.
Yeah.
Where things run high.
And.
And and have a more, a public forum that everybody feels is.
And and I understand that, and I understand that. It's just uh the, I I will say that I, the resources are are stretched a little thin, and that's all I'm calling out, and that's where I was looking at the compromise. So I have, before I call on you, Councilmember Harris, I think Councilmember Oxger's next, but did you have your hand up as well? So and and I thought you had yours first. So I'm gonna go Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Oxger, Councilmember Harris.
So I just want to clarify, Councilmember Steinmetz, that you're asking for like a public forum, not on this property, or not in these chambers, but something where, so a forum, a a forum-type format, where there's a community member raises their hand, you call them, they ask a question, you do your best to answer, and you, like that? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, the location doesn't matter, whether it's in these chambers or somewhere else. It's, it's the opportunity of the public to be presented with some information, and for them to ask questions and and give some feedback.
So a forum. So he's not, not just an informational session, but a forum.
So just be, and I'm gonna give both of, both councilmembers an opportunity to speak. One of the purposes of this meeting is that we can take it to the city manager per our, if if three or more of us discuss, and he can come back with some options for us. And I think that's what we're after. But with that, I'm gonna, if, unless you still have the floor.
I wanted to just clarify what he's asking.
So then I'm gonna give Councilmember Oxger, Councilmember Harris, um, and then it, but it does seem like we have three people consensus, so we can take it there. But I'll give you a few minutes each, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so my understanding of this is, is that it, this is the introduction of items for future consideration. This is saying, you know, it sounds like we're sitting here trying to work out the details right now. Okay? But to to me, what you were saying is, we need to have a discussion about how to approach this particular problem, which would mean that we would have to sit down and and hash out exactly how we want that method for uh, you know, dissemination of of information. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then I support that, and I'll second it if nobody else has.
Well, it's, 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 it, in this particular case, there's no motions. It's just um taking a referral. The idea was be, we'd be giving to the city manager for suggestions of how to achieve this objective. We're just telling them a little bit about what we want. To, what you're talking about is some kind of study session or something at a later date. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
What's he asking for? I don't think any of what has been suggested so far is excluded.
Yep.
It it's, it's a question of how do we get the process out? We need to do something to inform the public.
Thank you. We've got three to move it forward.
All right, three to move forward, but I'm gonna give, because of unfairness, I'm gonna give Councilmember Harris just a few minutes, so we, and then we'll move on.
So you're proposing having someone from the ci- a representative from the city basically stand before a community meeting, um, you know, quarterly, to answer questions based on, you know, how things are progressing?
Not, not exclusively answering questions, making a presentation so that there is an update to what is going on, and then fielding questions if there are any.
But, okay, but this is, this is a, a.
This is, this is not a firing squad.
I don't, I'm just, it's, it's a, it's a representative of the city and taking questions from the public and providing updates. That's the idea?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I would not support that. Thank you.
All right.
I, I, you know, I, I support this. I think it's a good idea, and and I support it for one reason. If we don't get out there and tell our story and give the updates, then somebody else will, and they may not be the accurate story.
All right, so the, so basically, we're gonna give it to the city manager. He'll report back to us at a later date. All right, any other? Seeing none, okay, we're, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Deputy Mayor Buxton, go ahead.
So I uh, I understand that in the city of Federal Way, three of their ballfields are being destroyed for uh public facilities in Federal Way. And when I found that out, I thought, wow, I think, I think that we have a possible opportunity here in uh in our city to enhance the the field, the main field that we have at Steeman Ganderwood. So I, and that would be to create um a system in the field to uh put a removable fence using little pu- plugs, so that we could have Little League there, conduct Little League events there. And uh, so I would like to refer that possibility or discussion for gathering information or the process to municipal facilities.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Okay.
All right, move to municipal facilities on that. Any other new items?
The chair's got to accept that.
Yeah, the chair, the chair.
The chair, we'll, we'll let the chair, I defer to the chair. Again, it's a long night, man. Go ahead.
The chair accepts that.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, yeah, comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to remind council that in early March, hopefully, a study session, it's our intention to have a discussion with council about what is possible for us to do. Under the new environment, cost of money, COVID, difficulty hiring employees, shortages in labor market, all of that, that there are, that there may be things that we're not able to do as a city that we have done in the past. And I was just reminded by someone on our staff of Louisa Bang's rule, one more thing. So if we start taking on other projects, like just in advance, and I, it's council's choice as to what you want to do, we can't do everything. So if we start adding on to that, then some things will have to go away, so there are going to have to be trade-offs. And I think it's on us to try to make clear what those trade-offs would look like based on our staffing and all of that. Just, just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, we have 18 minutes before we have to move for an extension. So we're going to board and committee reports. The only thing I ask is brevity as best you can. With that, I'm going to turn it first over to councilmember Pennington.
First off, for those that are still here, thank you. Tonight was a, a, not a great night for our community, but, you know, we'll move on, and we'll move, we'll move forward, and we'll move through the things that happened. It's, it's, it's the way it is, we have to. This evening, I sat on the public safety meeting, and I'll let the, the chair give that report, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to councilmember Steinmetz.
Oh, I got, well, almost the same report. So, and I don't mean to imply that, because the first party group is very serious, and it really is a terrible thing, that you have to deal with, but sometimes you have to deal with it, and that's unfortunate. So, and the other thing is I sound complicated, but I'll refer to the chair's report on that.
Councilmember Oxger.
I think tonight was an example of the fact that we do not have enough communication going on. Last April, the council indicated by consensus, unanimous consensus, that we wanted to move forward. We then had a vote of five to two, and it was an argument, it was, it was actually the president, the proposal was put forward by the city manager to hire a consultant and come up with a plan. The only reason there were two votes against it was because the question was, were we going to solicit proposals from vendors who might have, you know, new programs or something that would be advantageous that we didn't know first, or that the consultant might not be immediately aware of? But anyway, we indicated we wanted to go forward with communication. Tonight was all about either an actual or perceived lack of communication. Okay? We're almost a year out of direction from the city to do something, and I would like to see us move forward with that. We cannot be allergic to public comment. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. The, okay, councilmember Nutting, my apologies.
No remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm sorry, people have left. Yeah. Do they still, still teach Kafka in high school? Let's see, oh, yeah, a planning commission would be a council decision, not up to the city manager. It was taken away by vote in 2013, and the closing comment by Bob Scheckler was, well, you know, we can always bring it back at any time, and whenever a politician tells you that, you should walk away. The steps was actually the Holmes Group. It's called that because, yeah, you know, the Marina Steps at Seattle. My niece is in a wheelchair, and she took a look at it and laughed. And the concerns about the engineering and everything, I'm, my, my biggest thing is, basically, we had no business publishing a Skylab picture, okay? Because, you know, in other words, you should do the studies and find out what's possible, and then put up the picture. And let's see here, and I guess, oh, yeah, regarding, yeah, Black History Month, I always, I never get tired of mentioning Tavis Smiley's great book, Death of a King. And one last thing, somebody like me, the Groucho joke was necessary. The problem with the public is that, you know, nobody can tell, very few people can tell truth to power here, because, you know, if you care about dogs, or public safety, or Redondo, or whatever your issue is, you have every, or the farmer's market, whatever it is, your, your incentives are all to make nice with the council, okay? It took somebody completely detached to be able to deal with the systemic problem that's been going on here for three decades. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we had the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee meeting before this one, and we went over the work plan for 2023. And of note, it included the, it includes the items that we'll be addressing in different meetings, including updates on body cams, flock cameras, speed cameras, our summer activities, crime intervention programs, and our crisis response team, our GPS team, if you ever see that, in regard to the Public Safety in Des Moines, it stands for Getting People's Services. So excited about that program, and I'm excited to hear about all these as the year progresses. We received a Redondo speed camera update, and then we, of course, you heard a lot about that tonight, we voted on creating a park. And we also talked about the accomplishments of 2022 that our department accomplished. And a couple of interesting things coming up will be community chip, chipping events. I think they're going to do four of them, for animals, for your pets. A chipping event where you can, people can gather and get free or discounted, chipping of their pets, and there are going to be community volunteers that will be given some wands, that if a stray animal, if cares can't get to the animal right away, community volunteers can help with a wand of your chipped animal. And just about, one more comment about the Getting People's Services. I am so happy that we moved forward with that, and that we've, we're still working to increase that team, our Getting People's Services team. We received a, an update in our Human Services Advisory Committee as well, about how we work that plan, and how we approach anybody on the streets, and help them get to the next step in their life and services, and connect them with anybody in shelter. I'm just, I'm very proud of our city moving forward in that way. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Van, I just want to apologize, we're not going to make room tonight for your voice, but I'll make sure you're first next time. It's, it's, it's just the end of the evening, and it was out of the context, but I just sincerely apologize at this point. I just want to say this, and been involved in many things throughout the community for the last several weeks, but points of view aren't the problem here. It's conduct. And either you condone it, or you condemn it. It's just that simple. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone second?
Okay, all those in favor? Passes 7-0. We adjourned, and the next meeting is February 23rd. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Guys, are you good?
I haven't believed that I saw you back there. I was, now, why? Why is it still here?